Third, we have citywide yard sales also start today and they will continue through Friday, July 22nd and Saturday, July 23rd. In the midst of the city yard, the citywide yard sales is the evangelical free churches having a community-wide yard sale that all the proceeds from that will go to the teachers and the students for supplies for George Washington School. So, that's great. Great River Players, their petite players, which are their youngest group, are putting on a show at the Grand entitled "The Pajama Party," Friday at 7:00 PM and Saturday at 2:00 PM. Of course, the farmer's market is Saturday morning at River City Mall from 8:00 till 11:30 AM. So, this is a great, great weekend for everybody to shop, eat, drink, listen, and read local. Item number five, citizens' request. Item number six? Oh, okay.
I'm not sure if that, there's, announce my name and so forth or...
Hold that down so we can hear you. Please state your name.
I just wanted to review the ordinance for the homeless shelter. I am very much for the homeless shelter. I am not exactly sure how some of the zoning goes and when different parts of it need to be addressed before it's in final scenario. So, one of the concerns that I had that I just thought maybe should be looked at before it's in its final mode are the, on page one, is the, I'm just gonna go line by line, I just have just a few. On the definitions, on line B, are the homeless shelter shall be emergency housing with minimal supportive services for homeless persons. And I wondered if that were, I don't know how important it is to have wording correct and so forth, but if minimal supportive services is necessary component of that, given that there may be more supportive services and that I didn't want that to be something that was held to, that we were held to in that situation, that we could have more supportive services, especially throughout the day, that if somebody said we don't want people there during the day, yet we were able to have some sort of social services or vocational services that were available there during the day, that we weren't held to the standard we were able to provide those services. So, I wanted that just to be something that was considered. And I know it says homeless person. Oh, it does say family up here. I'm sorry, I didn't include family, and it does, so that's great. And then for the emergency warming center for number C, or C, one of my concerns is that it doesn't really include the word humidity, which I'm gonna get to here in a minute, which is obviously one of the big things that we struggle with here in the Midwest and here in, here in Keokuk. I'm glad that we included emergency warming center because there are situations, I know when I've lived in other cities and we've had homeless shelters, there's been multiple homeless shelters, and we still needed emergency centers because we needed something during the day for people, or we needed places for people who have been, who have become unwelcome in the current center that they were staying, and so they've needed something to stay just for an emergency when weather was that, or when weather is even inclement, when there's a tornado or a blizzard or something. So, again, I just, I don't want things to be so tight with their wording that we're not able to include that, or another place doesn't maybe think that they can open up their center because of that. On number two, when it says there's an exception for the permit, I noticed that it had the month of November, the month started at November for falling below 32. But if you think about October and think about dressing up your kids for Halloween, Halloween is always kind of a crapshoot, and you never really know when, you know, what you're gonna dress your kid as that night. I know that is the last day of October, but still, that month is always sort of up and down, and I would hate for us to have, leave out a month and have people be very cold in the evenings and not have somewhere to go, simply because we didn't leave that month out, and yet it was still 32 degrees or, or even colder, and we, we have snows in October on a regular basis. Even kind of more important, one of the things is, has here for temperatures at 100 degrees, but then be considered, I guess, in this emergency shelter. If you, oh, y'all can't see it. It's not helpful. Oh, you got it there, okay. If, when, if you look at your phone, if you get your app, your weather app or something, if you see today that the heat index for today was already at a special warning for heat indices getting to 94 to 99, that's not your actual temperature, that's just what it feels like with the humidity. So, the, I'm not gonna go through it, you guys are smart people, you can look at that and see that the heat, you know, if it's 80, whatever it says, 80 degrees, and it can be 80 degrees and still have a heat index, or 84 degrees and still have a heat index close to 90. If you use the cautionary level, which is what the Salvation Army uses, they have their shelters open at, when it's 90 degrees out, and that's what they consider an emergency time to have their shelter or their cooling centers open during the summer. It could be, again, 84, 86, and, and the indices is at 90, and that's when they open it. If we have, we wait until it's 100 degrees, people are gonna be falling out all over the place, and these are folks that are, you know, people who don't have it, maybe people are also on oxygen or other types of needs that they may have, or have asthma or so forth, and, or are just walking around all day and just don't have other things, and the library isn't open, isn't listed as a cooling center, YMCA isn't listed as a cooling center, although the library is fantastic in allowing people to come in and use their facilities. I would recommend that we use, based on speaking to a local doctor as well, that we use the more cautious one and go to the 91 degree mark. The LA County has theirs used at the 91, which is the more cautious, I believe is the word that they use. Well, that's the night, that's the 80, so extreme caution is 90, or 90, 91, starting at 91, which would allow for, again, allow for more kind of proactive safety measures for, for folks who don't have air conditioning, or folks who are potentially on the streets. And similar with the nighttime hours is that 85 degrees, if it's 85 degrees in the evening, then that's, I would look at that more in terms of the heat indices, and looking at that more like in terms of it 80 or so forth instead of an 85. In terms of special use permits, that kind of all I have in terms of that. In terms of the special use permit, I know we haven't, is, does anything need to be addressed upfront, so we don't have to keep coming back to you in terms of any sort of accommodations or adaptations for people with disabilities, or any sort of accessibility options that we might need for people at any given location that we might have, like putting in ramps, having any sort of, needing to widen hallways, needing, or doorways, or changing bathrooms, any of those sorts of things? I don't know if any of those types of things need to be added, and, you know, egress windows in the basements or anything like that, are those things that need to be addressed just as we go? Oh, I'm sorry.
She's, she's, she's questioning whether or not in a homeless shelter, as part of the special use permit, they'll be required to basically meet ADA with ramps and widen hallways.
Or do, do we need to requ, I'm sorry, you weren't able to hear me. Do we need to put that in as?
No, it's, it's preferred if we didn't work with it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
This is the time I'm trying to help you with, you know, the women who just, quite some time.
Okay. I didn't mean to not look over your way.
And we've had some meetings, um, when any meeting work is reviewed, um, there was public input at that point. People need to come to the council or to these other public meetings way before it gets to a second reading to address issues that you feel like some need to address. And I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't mind issues addressing the council, I don't mind that the council says, let's change some things. But, you know, I mean, you were aware of the ordinance for quite, the homeless shelter ordinance for some time, because you taught the evening, so I'm just saying, I wish the public would come to the meetings prior to getting on the agenda for...
I'm sorry. I guess I, I was having a hard time understanding the process of some of the...
I know, I, 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 I really would like to hear the information, but I would really like to hear the information prior to a second reading at the council. I mean, I, you know, I sent homeless clients, they, I mean, they were aware that this was going on, and I wish they'd be on, at the same planning permission to be, when they're reviewing all the information in there, and giving me points, pointers of what they would like to see, you know, in the beginning. I don't run the public's ordinance, you know, I actually, I went through other individual new ordinances, you know.
In my defense, I'm not on the board there, I just...
That's fine, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm just explaining to people in the council, if you have questions, anyone in the public, if you have questions on something that's going to be on the planning condition, please come and address it at that point before we get to this meeting.
I apologize.
And, and going, I mean, you're gonna, you would have to, you know, pass this, at least that's, I mean, but I don't, if anything that you're asking now...
It was really simply more about just some detail, kind of the doubles and the details about the temperature aspect of things, asking that it went more by the heat indices, and the LA County uses more of the 91 degree heat indices versus 100 degree for the actual air temperature for the cooling centers, and starting off in October for the warming center, given that it can get quite cold, and you can have our first snow in times in October rather than November. I think, or basically, I probably could've said it just as quickly that way.
Did we address, so, just, I just wanna make sure that she had her question answered with the compliance, it's already in building code, is what I gathered from that, already in building code, so that would be under, and, like, under the umbrella, right there?
So, if we needed to add additional features, that wouldn't be an issue?
What, what, what would happen is, 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 you would, if you're gonna make modifications, you, you probably are gonna need a building permit, as part of the building permit, we review the plans, and during that point, during the review, if there was necessary for you to add bathrooms, or to make modifications to bathrooms, or to add a ramp or something like that, we would let you know as part of the building code.
Okay.
Right.
I do appreciate you coming up and speaking with us on especially the heat index, and I think you're right about, at least in October, that's why we love Iowa so much, there's such extreme seasons, so it's, it's very beneficial that you came up and spoke with us. I appreciate it.
I, I do have a question about the warming center, though. What are we following now? Because I know that the warming center at the church, the weather was definitely not below 32 or higher than 100, and they were operating, so I'm just wondering what... Okay.
Oh, special.
Yeah, and that closed like May 22nd.
I, I just wondered, because I knew when I had taken food out there before, the weather was, I mean, probably in the 50s, so I just wondered how it was operating, if this was the temperatures that were proposed. Okay.
The council, just to, just to reflect the planning condition, we didn't really get the practice, it's not a problem. It's just a lot of time spent, a lot of money spent, you know, to get through a conference. I, you know, I, I do need everybody to read these and, you know, to, to let me know prior to us getting here for a reading, meeting, we've taken it to the planning condition, we brought it to the council prior to the ordinance for one, and then we brought it to the resident's. So, you know, I don't care, I mean, I, I do care, but I don't mean it that way, I just mean, I'm not offended at neutral化, but we do this over and over and over. So, we don't ask questions before we actually get to the first and second reading, please.
You mentioned why it would be open still if it was 50 during the day. I think this is, yeah, I think this is, unfortunately, and again, I apologize, this is new to me, I, I think Mr. Brown had been handling a lot of this paperwork before, actually, I thought he was going to be here tonight.
Right. We appreciate it to, that's why we have first, second, and third readings, is to have public input, so I very much appreciate, you know, the opportunity to have it, so, please.
My, my intention is not to send it back to the drawing board, whatsoever, but I, I think to, one thing to consider about April and May is that it, they are very stormy months, very rainy months, very muddy months, we would have clients come back from being out all day soaking wet, their clothes soaking wet, their, their shoes and socks that they have, you know, maybe one pair of, just soaking wet and, and drenched in mud, and, and so getting that dry place to sleep, some, some clothes washed and dried, and, and that made a huge impact, otherwise they, you know, they would've been in a pretty tough situation. So, I think, I think it was very much worthwhile to have that continued through May. And now, I mean, even seeing some of our clients on the streets now that were staying there, there's already a difference in lost weight and, uh, this, the appearance is, is not what it was, what we had gotten and gained, a lot of it seems to be lost, so, anytime that we can keep a shelter open where people are getting consistent food, consistent safe place to sleep is good.
I have a question, this might be a silly question, which I'm known for. Anyway, who places that as far as when it should be open, when it shouldn't be open? Is, is that, does that have to be such a fine line deal? Who makes that call? You know, if you, if, if, if it's, if it is raining and these people need a place to come in and, and get dry, and, you know, get their clothes washed, but it's not within those parameters, then who makes that decision that says, no, you can't come in right now?
In that particular situation, it, it was variable, because we had some staff turnover, and it, it's, it was being run by Tribulation and Trust Lighthouse Center by Derem Brown at, at that point, and, and so the staff that he sent generally made some of those recommendations based on if it was, you know, pouring down rain, or the weather was during the wintertime, because we had some March and April, or at least March blizzards that were pretty significant. Sometimes they got sent out, uh, when we're able to go to the library for the day, but they got sent to walk from First Christian Church to the library, which is a significant walk, and they get there pretty wet, and that is, you know, they did, and sometimes it was dependent on the church and what the church was okay with, and if they were okay with them spending the day there, and, and kind of what activities they had going on. So, it was, I mean, what staffing was available, sometimes there were staff available to stay there during the day and supervise, and sometimes there wasn't, so there was, and multiple...
Forgive me if I didn't catch, are, are you just a citizen in town, or do you run one of these places, or what are you affiliated with, or are you affiliated with a shelter now?
I've been working with that shelter since probably a week into it in March, with some, with, with the shelter in general, and then have continued working with some of the clients there through this time, even some of the, a client that's actually, when, when the shelter closed, that client went up to the Welsh, up to the Washington Shelter. So, just continuing to work with, with him on trying to get housing back here in Keokuk, it's just a very, very long process. We started as soon as I started working with him in March, in terms of just getting social security card, getting ID, all of those things took about two months, and then, and then he, the shelter was getting ready to close, and by the time of social security card, ID, and then, one other piece, like Medicaid card, and, and then, so, you know, then getting all the applications and so forth for housing and, and whatnot, it's, it's a very eye-opening experience for me in terms of the length and, and time that it takes to, to get all those things done, so it's not a quick process, and people really do need a safe and helping hand to, to get that stuff done, especially if they're not, you know, they don't know the system, and then if you don't have one thing, you don't have the other, and...
I'm still a little apprehensive on this. I, I went along with the first reading, I'll probably continue to go along with it, because I'd, I'd like to see it work, but I'd like to tell the council and the citizens, I have big reserves on this, I just, I know we have quite a few in town that have been offered help, offered a good place to stay, they refuse it, they'd rather be out free, they'd rather be getting the free handouts than having to work for it. So, I may be the, the black sheep on this council, I'll still go with it, because I like to see this succeed, and I'd like to, I hope that it works out, but honestly, I don't see a very big benefit, other than drawing more of the same type to town. I hope you've seen a lot better, I'd really like to see cases where this has panned out and people have gotten what they needed, because they was just down a short time, but a lot of them that walk the streets of this town are there because of their choice, not all, but a lot. So, that, that's all I gotta say, I, I hope, I hope it's a success.
Well, I think, you know, other things that came into play were, with some of the individuals were getting them their first doctor's appointment in quite some time, you know, being able to get a dentist appointment, being able to get all the different services in play, being able to get mental health appointments lined up, and if you don't have a phone, if you don't have a, a consistent mailing address, you know, you can't, you can't have all of those things, and being able to just use the church's mailing address was huge for people, that was able to get their social security card, that was able to use that to get then their ID. All of those things came to play, being able to use that phone number to make appointments, is all those people, you know, to be able to get food stamps, that was the other thing. You know, you need an ID, you need an address and all those to be able to get even those basic things started, started up, so to be able to even get a first chance, then, you know, you need, you need that. And then there's a lot of substance abuse and a lot of mental health issues that do come along with, with that, that's not all that it is, there's a lot of other things that come into play, but, but if you get started kind of down a path, and you maybe need a hand up or a hand along, then, you know, there's, there's people that are willing to give that to you. And I would encourage you to come and, and introduce yourself to some of those folks and, and be a, a role model of what it is, you know, of what, of what hard work can do, and, and just to see for yourself what it is. I mean, you sit down and play a game of checkers with some of these guys, you'd be, you'd be surprised.
I, I've met quite a few, I haven't, I haven't been to that place to meet any, I have met plenty on the street, I've actually offered assistance on the street, I have family and friends both that work at DHS, and I know that most of these that I'm talking about have an address, they don't live there, they have an address, they're getting food stamps, they're getting a check, they're getting what they need. I don't see that they're helping themselves, I guess, is where I'm at, and it is, it's frustrating that you can lead a horse to water, you can't make a drink, and that's...
Well, we'll keep working on helping the people that we can.
Yes, and that's why I say, and that's why I'm going along with it, because I hope if, if we can help one or two people and get them on the right path, I'm, I'm for it.
I am wondering, will the shelter serve as a warming center? I, I'm just wondering, based on the temperatures that you're, you're offering and, and things like that, if there's not 35 people in the shelter, is the plan for it to operate as a warming center?
These are all such great questions, and as of now, Derem Brown is the one who is sort of listed as the, the, the one who's gonna be in charge of it through Tribulation and Trust, and I, I just am not qualified at this point to answer those questions, because I'm, I'm not on the board, I'm not, I've, I've been involved, but I don't have, I don't have answers to his questions. I, I know if I was running it, I would say that there would be an opportunity to, to stay there or to stay somewhere else.
I don't mean to direct that toward you, and I've read the ordinance, it's just when you brought up the warming center today, I was wondering if that was the, the idea.
That, say that one more time, I'm sorry.
I, I wasn't trying to like bombard you, I know that you aren't in, in charge of it.
Right.
So, I wish that he would be here for the readings.
Yeah, no, I, I had fully expected that he was going to be here for, for the readings.
So, when you asked about the warming center, I just assumed that the, the homeless shelter would serve as that, or the churches would, as they have in years past, during the months that it's needed, during the weather events that it's needed?
Which is why I, I, I had assumed that, or one of the, what I was trying to do when I read this was think of, in terms of the, since something more formal was coming out, was think in terms of what the churches were going to be doing and make, see, I don't know like who wrote this, like if Derem had a play in writing this or not, and, and if it was written for that stance, or if it was also written to make sure that the churches had that opportunity and not to harness them in any way, so that they felt like they couldn't open if it was October, or they couldn't stay open in May because it, it was May, but it, yet it was storming, or there were tornadoes, or, or something. So, I, I know that in, in general, in what I think, what, I don't wanna speak on his behalf, but from what, overall, I believe the, the general idea is typically for individuals to be out at like 8:00 and come back at 6:00, and those hours had changed in the much colder months to maybe 8:00 to 4:00, and then, but, but there was never anything clear, like, you know, it was never really sure, so I don't know exact, I don't know the exact policy. But the idea is that people would be gone during the day doing something else.
I would suggest that he'll probably want to, to come at least to the third reading if it gets there, or to come to the meetings, there are more people coming out in opposition, so a, a tighter plan on the way he's going to execute it would probably be beneficial.
Can you give me an example, a title of like what the hours would be? Can you give me an example, a title of like what, what the hours would be?
Oh, no, more, more so long. I know he said it was like a 45 day. There are absolutely going to be people, you said, you know, it takes two months to get an ID. We're already past the 45 days. So, so how long can someone actually stay there? What is the goal when you get there? To rehabilitate citizens, essentially? And I don't expect you, you to have any of that.
I mean, I don't.
That's not on you. I'm just saying.
Right. I mean, it's not a rehabilitation center.
Well, I think it's to make them no longer homeless at some point. I assume that's the goal, is that they won't forever be homeless.
Right. I mean, in terms of.
When I say rehabilitate, I'm saying rehabi- rehabilitate maybe is a better word? Or to, to give them the opportunity to live on their own and not on the street?
Well, maybe that's why it says minimal supportive services. Because if you're only there from eight, from 6:00 PM until 8:00 AM, there's not a lot of services that you can get.
That would be for a warming center.
This is what his shelter looks like.
Yeah, but during the day, he had spoke that this is, they get them to resources, doctor's appointments. Obviously, that can't happen at 8:00 PM. That's what he had said.
That happens when volunteers like myself.
Yeah.
Step in. That isn't necessarily a part of.
Okay, I think that he may have misrepresented that then.
I want to thank you for coming and sharing all these.
At least here.
Input with us.
Yeah.
And so if you could encourage him to come to the next meeting so that we can get some of these questions answered that have come up today, that would be beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and again, I just want to say, I, I feel like I am speaking for him, but I, I don't want to be speaking for him. I don't work for him. I don't represent him. So I want to be really careful with that. But thank you for so much of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please, you have my email now, so.
Thank you. Item number six, consent agenda. Minutes of the council workshop and a regular city council meeting of July 7th, 2022. Minutes of the safety committee meeting of July 14th, 2022. Cash receipts and treasurers report of June 2022. Resolution approving a five-day liquor license for rolling on the river, Mississippi Drive, Victory Park, August 18th through the 22nd, 2022, Class C liquor license pending dram. Resolution approving a five-day liquor license for Lake Cooper Foundation, Big Dam Street Festival, 8 North Water Street, Victory Park, August 24th through the 28th, 2022, Class B beer permit. Motion to pay bills and transfers listed in registers number 5283 through 5285. Do I have a motion to, to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now is the time and place for a public hearing on the status of funded activities for the City of Keokuk, CDBG Housing Sustainability Rehabilitation Program. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Gate City on Friday, July 8th, 2022. I am opening the public meeting at 6:06. Comments?
Yep, I have a couple paper copies, if anybody wants one. No? No takers? Um, I'm Sarah with the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission, and I'm administering the Housing Sustainability Grant that the City of Keokuk currently has. It was funded in 2020. So this is just a requirement that HUD, that HUD has, that we have to come and update the council and offer comments from the public. So the grant was to complete six homes. It used to be a targeted neighborhood. They kind of did away with that. So we had six selected homeowners that applied when we wrote the grant. The total grant is for $238,994. And currently, we've drawn down $89,489. There was no local match needed from the homeowner or the city for this grant. And then the homeowners can receive up to $24,999 in construction costs and then an additional $4,500 to address lead issues in the home. We currently have five projects complete with construction, and then one should be completed within the next week. The grant is for exterior work. Um, it's for exterior work unless we're addressing lead-based paint issues inside. This is for households at 80% of the median family income by, published by HUD for Lee County. The grant end date is August 1st, is what we're, what we're shooting for. I talked to the state yesterday, and they are going to extend that because she needs to come down and do project monitoring. So that will allow us, I guess, a little flexibility to get our homes lead-tested and get that finished. So these are the projects that we've been working on. 324 Johnson Street, they, the projects received new windows, new storm doors, window wrap and addressed the lead. There's a couple of the pictures that we have done for that property. Another project we did was at 926 Franklin Street. This one received a new roof, some new windows, and new doors, the new siding on the rear of the property, and then of course, the lead. So there's a couple of the windows that were replaced. There shows a picture of the siding that we did to the rear of the property. Our next project we did is 924, or 926 Concert. This one received a new roof. We did, we repaired and serviced the windows. We repaired the rear porch. So since these are federal funds, we have to follow the State Historical Preservation Office. This home would be considered historical for them, so they would not want us to do new siding. They would rather us repair the windows, if possible, instead of replace them. So the next two properties that you will see, we did repairing the windows and not window replacement. So there's a before picture of that property. We haven't done the final of that one, so I don't have an after picture. But 924 is pretty much the same house. And so it also received a new roof. We repaired the windows, and then they receive funds for fascia and softing. So there's a before-after of the roof. You can kind of see the roof for 926 in the upper picture. The houses are identical, so. So 604 South 8th Street, and just finished that one up. It received a new roof, screens, new concrete stairs, and storm doors. There's some before-after pictures of that property. And then our last one is under construction. This property is receiving new gutters, downspouts, had some major foundation repair, and then new softing fascia and a new door. So those are the six projects that we are working on, that we are getting, ready to get the grant closed out. Are there questions from council about the project?
What was the age of the histor- the historical ones that, with the.
Do you know how old those, were they built in the late 1800s? They consider anything historical 50 years, so really isn't that old. Since these two, what's that? Yeah. Sometimes it's not just age, but since these two are identical and they, they did consider, there's a lot of homes in the older neighborhoods that maybe aren't historical themselves, but maybe they're contributing to a neighborhood. So that does limit us on, with federal funds, what we can do for rehab.
Yeah.
Yep, a lot of the homes, we, we find a lot of homeowners need roofs, so those kind of eat at the, the budget a lot. So helps stabilize the property. And it's much needed for the homeowner.
Sarah, do you know if at any time they're going to raise the, the threshold? You know, it's been stuck at $24,999. I, I'm, in 1999, I started with the City of Algonia, it was $24,999. Any chance of that? Because back then, it didn't go very far, and it certainly doesn't go very far this.
No, it definitely does not. Sometimes like you can do a roof and some windows. Nope, that number is gonna, there's some, like they have to change the laws, and they're worried once they open that can of worms that they might do away with the funds. So that I don't see changing. They did make adjustments to it over the years where it used to have, you had to, if you had a checklist of 1 through 20, you had to address, you had to do 1 through 20. Where now, if you only have funding 1 through 6, you can do that. So they have made adjustments to the program over the years, but, and this project is actually going away. The state's no longer going to have the Housing Sustainability Grant. They're looking at doing more of a neighborhood grant where it will be maybe a combination of projects. So if, that's, it hasn't been rolled out yet, but if you know a, a neighborhood that maybe needs some infill, some rehab, they're looking at maybe a, a project that needs multiple activities instead of just the rehab. So rules have not come out yet for that one, so we're anxious to see how. We do still have our housing trust fund for rehab.
You said, um, did, was it, you have 90, roughly 90 left in that fund? Is that what you said?
We have spent $90,000. I need to do, we just recently finished, the contractor recently finished three of the homes. We're doing the lead testing next week, and then I will do those final draws. So we've spent 90. We won't spend that entire 238, whatever it was. The state allows for relocation cost, and the, since we are doing more external work now, the homeowners usually don't have to relocate and stay in a hotel and stuff. So some of those funds, we won't ever spend. But I do, I do need to do a draw and get it closed out when we get all those completed.
Okay. So we're not gonna, we won't be at like 130? We're going to be less than that? And will we be close to zero? Is that the, I mean, of course, I want that to be the goal.
So we have currently drawn 90,000. We will not draw the full 238, 994.
Okay.
Because some of that is for the relocation cost. Some of the properties, like the first one only received 17,000, so.
Does that roll over?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I wish it did.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, all the homeowners are very appreciative, and it's a great need. So yeah, I wish it would have rolled over, but. Any other questions? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So if there's no further discussion, city clerk, do we have any written comments or objections have been received?
No.
Therefore, being no further comments or objections, no matter on this, I will close the public hearing at 616. Item number eight, motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance amendment to the zoning ordinance adding homeless shelter to special uses.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to amend this to replace the wording of the R3 zone to an R4 zone.
I'm sorry, as a point of order, we first have to have a motion on the ordinance and then the amendment.
Okay. I will make the motion then.
Do I have a second?
Now.
Now I would like to make a motion to amend the ordinance as presented to replace the wording of an R3 zone to an R4 zone.
And I will second that.
Any discussion?
And what does this do when we change it from the R3 to R4? Just so everybody's on board with that?
The R3 is two-family dwelling district. R4 is multi-fi, multiple-family dwelling district. The homeless shelter would be a more compatible use with the R4.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I, do I have a motion to waive this? No, I can't now.
You have to take a discussion on the ordinance as a whole now.
Okay. So now, we are going to take a.
Is there any discussion on, on the ordinance as amended?
So now we need a roll call, and this is on accepting the ordinance as amended.
Garcia? Lynn?
Aye.
Alonzo?
Aye.
Andrews?
Aye.
Marston?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Greenwald?
Do I have a motion to waive the third reading of this ordinance? That fails. Item number nine, motion to approve the initial reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 9.90 regarding operation of off-road utility vehicles and golf carts. Any motion, oh, any motion to waive the sec, oh, we got a vote on. Motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
No. No. It would be a roll call vote, but.
Okay.
The revised ordinance eliminates the $75 annual fee for UTVs and golf carts. The state of Iowa passed a law prohibiting the change, the charging of a permit fee for UTVs provided the vehicle is registered with the Iowa DNR. The law was effective July 1, 2022. Council expressed a desire to eliminate the fee for golf carts as well. This does not prevent us from regulating UTVs and golf carts. We can still require a permit. We can still limit where and when they can operate. It's just we cannot charge a fee for the UTVs, and the ordinance eliminates the fee for golf carts as well. They, they, what it is, is they, they still have to go to the county and register their, their UTV with the DNR.
Yeah.
And then they still need to go to the police department to get their permit.
Okay, I'm making sure, because I've told people this week to go to the police.
No, 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 they must, yeah, they, we, we, we can, they still must obtain a city permit. All the other regulations within the ordinance as to where and when they can operate, stay.
I think it's just important to say that you have to have the city sticker.
Yes. Yes, we can still permit them.
It's free, but you have, yeah, you have to have it.
Any more discussion? I have a roll call.
Garcia?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Alonzo?
Andrews.
Aye.
Marston.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Greenwald.
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion to waive the second and third reading of this ordinance?
No moved.
Any discussion? Do I need a roll call?
Garcia, Lynn.
Aye.
Allentham.
Aye.
Andrews.
Aye.
Marston.
Aye.
Aye.
Greenwald.
Aye.
And so I need a motion to adopt and give final approval to the ordinance.
No move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number 10, consider resolution approving contract for services for the riverfront trails with Shoemaker and Holland. Motion to approve? Any discussion?
The Iowa DOT has approved the form of contract, the Shoemaker and Holland, to design the riverfront trail. The cost of the contract is $84,000 to be paid through grants and donations. Contract cost is the amount submitted for the grant application.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 11, we have a motion to approve the resignation of Linda Marston from the City Council Fifth Ward.
No move with regret.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to discuss.
Yeah, Councilmember Marston would like to address the council. Do note that the effect, effective date is July 22, 2022, which is tomorrow.
Mayor Mahoney and fellow council members, it's with great regret that I'm informing you of my resignation from City Council effective tomorrow, July 22, 2022. My husband obtained a new head principal job in another school district. Moving out of my ward this coming August in just a couple of weeks means that I'll be relinquishing my position as Fifth Ward representative. I do have a great sense of guilt knowing I will not be able to complete my term. It was also more than just a seat on council and boards and commissions for me. And this is my children's hometown. So we'd never really expected to leave it. It's been a great pleasure being a part of the Keokuk City Council and many other boards, committees and commissions that I've served on. I'm really proud of all the work that we've done. I've been on since 2020. And I think in these past three years, we've made some changes and some mistakes, but we've made it better and we're trying extremely hard. And you can see the love in Keokuk within us. And I do wish that council has further success as we, as you guys continue on without me. My family's lived by the motto, make it yours. And we really embrace this motto, allowing Keokuk to be one of the most beautiful seasons of our lives. So we appreciate it. It's been an honor serving Fifth Ward constituents and I wish you guys the best.
Linda.
So Linda, on behalf of the city of Keokuk and the Keokuk City Council, this is a small token of our appreciation, but you need to know that we love you and we will miss you. Thank you for everything.
Now you gotta ask for a vote.
Any more discussion? I don't know. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 12, motion to approve to fill the vacancy in the Fifth Ward City Council.
No move.
Second.
So this is for appointment of the vacant council seat. The appointment must be made within 60 days of the vacancy and shall be until the next city general election, which is November of 2023, at which time the, whoever wins that election would then serve out the remainder of the term, which would be until December of 2025. If an appointment is not made within 60 days, a special election will be called. A public notice announcing the intent to fill by appointment must be published no less than four and no more than 20 days prior to the meeting where the appointment will occur. A majority of the entire council, which is five members, must vote to make the appointment. Within 14 days after the publication or 14 days after the appointment, a petition can be filed by residents of the ward to hold a special election. If so, the appointment is temporary. A valid petition must have 1,000 signatures or a number of signatures equal to 15% of the voters who voted for the candidates for the office of the preceding election where the seat was on the ballot. So Councilmember Marston received 296 votes. 15% is 44.4 or 45 signatures. In the past, what we have done is as we advertise for this, we ask anybody within that ward that is interested in being the, filling the seat, to submit a letter and background on themselves as to and possibly why they would be the best candidate. At a workshop, we will ask each candidate to come in, give a opening statement. We will then ask a series of questions. The council will score everybody's answers on those questions and then turn them in to me. I do a composite score. And at the next meeting, whoever has the highest composite score, the council agrees to then seat that person.
Mayor, I would like to abstain from this vote in particular. But with that being said, to my fellow Fifth Ward constituents, for anybody looking to come out to Fifth Ward, if you have any questions, please reach out to me. My number will hopefully still be on the website for a little bit. And reach out to me if you have any questions, if you wanted to know if this is for you. We have a very active ward. I imagine it'll be a great race.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 13, boards and commissions.
There's no vote tonight. We just have a second notification on Veterans Memorial Commission and first notification on Keokuk Housing Authority.
Item number 14, council liaison reports. Item number 15, staff reports.
Okay, I just wanted to give a quick report on, we had some special assessments that have been paid. A special assessment is liens that were paid on, for what I'm going to talk about is housing nuisances. So for example, junk cleaned up in the yard, mows, vehicle toes, just miscellaneous things like that that are deemed as nuisance that we resolve. Our total from July of 2021 to July of 2022 was approximately $33,000. So that doesn't mean that all those nuisances that got paid were actually from the calendar period, you know, those 365 days. Some of these nuisances that got paid could have been from two years ago. But finally, those, those taxes or all these liens and taxes have been paid. So then we recover that. So that's my report today.
Anybody else?
Chip seal project down on Riverfront is going fairly well. We ran into a small issue with the surface at the Bank Street parking lot. We had that resolved. So we're hoping the latter part of next week that the oil will be applied to the roadway down there. That's kind of the tenet plan on that. Our city crews have been out chip sealing and putting light oil on quite a few blocks of city streets here in the last couple of weeks. We continue to work on that. We have had help from other employees, not just street department employees, working on some of our road repairs this summer. I wanted to tell them thank you for that. I have not heard back from ITC on the road repairs on Hazelhurst. That's still an ongoing, there's, I don't see any issues there. It's just I think they're looking for a contractor, kind of a bad time of year to be trying to get somebody to come look at a job when everybody's already scheduled. But that should still be moving forward. I just haven't heard anything back from them.
Robert, I know you got your hands full with what's going on, but I was wondering if where we're at on the plan to identify the streets that we're talking about, working on for bonding for, what is it? Five million we talked about? And where we're at on that?
And. We are working on it. It will take us a little while. John and Jason have both been actively working on that as their free time allows. So we are updating our current map and, and once we have some progress, more progress made on that, I'll bring that to you.
Anybody else? Right.
Okay, okay.
So my report on ADM, the city has now signed and completed a consent order with ADM, a copy of which you all have in front of you. The order sets certain milestones for compliance, some of which ADM has already met. The administrative fine imposed by the city upon ADM for their non-compliance will be deferred and forgiven except for 25% so long as ADM meets the milestones, does not create pass-through interference at the treatment plant. A copy of the order has been forwarded to the Iowa DNR and it, and it is hoped that the order demonstrates our commitment to solving the issue. Southeast Iowa Community Action Report, Community Action has submitted their, their first quarter report on assistance funded by ARPA funds. Assistance was given to 131 individuals and 43 households with, for their sanitation billings. The report is attached and has more demographic backgrounds if you want to look at that. Airport sales, fuel sales at the airport exceeded expectations for the fiscal year. Gross sales were over $61,000 over budget projections and produced a profit in excess of $27,000, which is about 13,000 more than what we expected. It was the first full fiscal year of fuel sales that the city was directly, directly responsible for. While the sales are a pleasant surprise, it is expected with the higher fuel prices that sales will diminish. It's what I've seen in the past with other airports. But hopefully, as we stay competitive, flyers will drop in. We do have a long runway, which helps attract some of the bigger planes. An update on AMJET. I contacted Paul Rules with AMJET and requested a status update on the project. The installation of the small unit has been delayed due to turnover at Ameren. Both Mr. Rules and Ameren have stated that installation of the unit should occur by the end of October. The unit will then need to be tested. If results are positive, AMJET has orders for two additional small units to be placed, I don't believe on, on the Keokuk Dam, but on other dams.
Thanks for that update.
Item number 16, new business. Item number 17, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute break.
...
Nobody listens. meeting. Up first is Wes Ames' presentation on dormitories at SCC.
Here we go.
Yes, we are. Pull that mic down and tell us who you are, sir.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Wes Ames. And the ones that do know, I feel like I'm in the shark tank right here, right now. I need these guys to get up, I can see them, actually. But anyway, I'm here with, uh, Kevin Carr, SCC College, and they asked me to do an exercise here, uh, two or three months ago. And to do that is to help, um, their college prosper here and also our town. So we've done an exercise, I'm gonna let Kevin present it to you, and, uh, I'll be glad to answer any questions as well. Um, Kevin, I can give you a handout. Um, I ran some numbers for him based on information they needed to make it, I won't say not, not profitable, but break even, uh, on their end, and he'll fill you a little more on that. So the numbers you got represent what he'll talk about. But it's, um, something I think is, everybody knows me, sports-minded and college-minded, would be great for the community if this can help. And so he's gonna throw some things that you guys could think about, and, um, and, uh, Kevin George.
Kevin Carr. Yeah, Kevin Carr, I'm the Vice President of Administrative Services at SCC, but, um, generally I run things that are non-academic, so facilities, residence life, chief financial officer, uh, food service, and all four of those are impacted on the topic that we're gonna talk about tonight. So we have, uh, struggled with food service, but that's, that's related to the volume of students, and that's really not what I'm talking about. However, by having a residence hall on our campus indirectly would help our food service. So we knew, um, or we've had, we being Dr. Ash, our president, myself, have had a, a goal to move the residence hall, Roberta's dorms, and maybe move that on to campus. And then we could provide food service, which we don't provide now. We wouldn't have the transportation issues, et cetera. But we, we haven't done anything about it until Janify for Friends introduced us to Wes. So Wes got us off the dime and provided us some data so we could start to, to think about that. So that's how we, we got here. Now, when, when we first started this, in West Burlington, we have a developer that built the residence halls there and took on all occupancy risk. So that was significant risk for that developer. But we have lots of sports up in West Burlington that, that helps feed the residence halls, and it's, it's worked out. So we initially started that exercise with Wes, and as we got into the numbers, we're, we're not gonna go forward if anything that's not a win-win situation. So as we looked at the numbers, and I couldn't even begin, I don't know, what, what would it cost to build a 22-bed dorm on campus? So Wes went through that, but as we looked at it, from his perspective, I put his hat on, and if you paid property taxes, you, you probably had to amortize a loan over 20 or 25 years through a normal commercial loan. Uh, I, I really couldn't see it, at, at the very best, it would break even. So, okay, Wes, let's, let's talk about this. Our next step was, and I visited with the USDA, it'd be one lending source that we could do, but here's a big advantage, uh, and we could do this direct through the USDA, or we could go through a commercial bank, and they would turn around and the USDA would guarantee 90% of it. Okay? But we could do a 40-year amortization instead of a 20 or 25. Okay? So that's really good news. And then we, as a college, don't pay property taxes as a governmental entity. So then I reran the numbers, which is what I, and I'll, I'll walk through those briefly with you. Um, and that's what, that's, that's what you've got in front of you here. And so we are going to have a work session, I believe, in late August with our board. So in the end, it's the Board of Trustees, you know, that would direct this, but we would, we would give them recommendations. And so we're looking at a 40-year, if we were to go forward with this, a 40-year amortization, which means a 40-year commitment for that residence hall and a commitment, you know, and we're committed to Keokuk for the long haul, but this just puts additional teeth into it. And so it's, we, we would, uh, pay that loan down over, over a 40-year period of time. We have women's basketball here, so I'd want, want to make sure that we have a solution for a basketball court for 40 years, because that's our main driver of residence halls students now. Our next, uh, sport that we're actively looking at right now is bowling. So I understand Keokuk is, uh, the top of the top for bowling, and so it makes sense for that sport to start here. Then what we have is some momentum that is, is building, and probably our next sport would be wrestling, that would bring in, because it's, uh, both men and women, and it brings in numbers. And so on the business side, we get tuition revenue, maybe from the Pell Grant, but we get tuition revenue from that, but it also helps fills up our dorms. So what Wes and I talked about was a, and, you know, he did the drawing, and, and that was 22 beds. And so the first thing is, I know you all know the Keokuk campus, so what, that would be east towards the river there. So, uh, up there, building a, and we, we could start out, we got plenty of parking, and if we connected just a sidewalk, I keep looking to my expert here, he, because he's, he's helped me here, to a 22-bed residence hall. And then that's what we would start with, and then we would add on another 22-bed residence hall. And so we, we could grow. Now, the map that you've got, there, there's orange, so it's a master facilities plan. The orange is just theoretical. So, um, one of the buildings that used to be orange is that Industrial Technology Training Center that we put in, but don't know what those other buildings would be, but we wanted to make sure we have growth, and then we want to make sure then that we, we would have, uh, rooms for the residence halls up there. So again, if we had the students living right there, then, on a side note, that helps me with food service, because all of a sudden you've got 22 people, three meals a day. So all of a sudden, you're, you're getting revenue volume for a food service provider to, to make sense. That's just a, 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 a side benefit on that. On the, on the numbers, if I just briefly walk through that, so Wes, again, helped me with, uh, um, what, what, what the estimated cost, I added in, when, when he presented, he had zero profit in the building, um, and we, so I, I've added arbitrarily 8%, but there, there's gotta be a profit, obviously, in there for the builder, uh, an estimated 100,000 for furniture and 100,000 a cushion, so, excuse me, approximately $2 million. And then I'm estimating that we would sell Roberta's dorms, which are all individually metered. So I think it would be a good, um, for a developer to take that on, and I estimated 200,000 for that. That then would come onto the tax rolls, uh, assuming it's sold to a private individual. We do have CARES money, so, uh, for us, it's the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund is what, what our CARES money is, is considered in the, in the college, set aside 100,000 for a Keokuk project of those monies. And here's, here's the, the ask or help, I, I don't know where to, to start, and so Wes was so gracious to at least begin the conversation with you tonight, but when Wes did it, uh, the estimate for the sewer and water is $156,000. So could, this is where the city, can the city help by putting that in for us? So under this assumption that, that we did, that would bring down the, the borrowing then to just under a million six. But here I'm doing a 40-year amortization. I did call the USDA, and actually the current rate's 3.25% for us, but I, I think next Wednesday there's gonna be a rate hike, 75 basis points to maybe 1%. But the interest rate's not as important when you get to amortize it over 40 years. And I, I keep wanting to emphasize that, because that's the point I want to make to the board. Board, you're, you're making a decision, we have five members, but when you do this, you, you, you're doing this for 40 years. You can't start it and then change your mind later, right? If, if our board turns over, which it will, you're committing this, because we're, we're locking a loan into the college. That's their CFO making recommendations to them on that. And so utilities, I have some experience, uh, Wes and I talked about that, some other miscellaneous expenses. And then what I did is, okay, what's the, uh, rental income? So we charge board, we don't, or we charge room right now, not food service, hopefully one day food service to, to the benefit of the student. And if we, if we, and, and most of that revenue comes through the Pell Grant, so that's a federal, federal government program, that we would need 18.2 students to break even. But that's, we just need to break even, you know, or, or get close to breaking even. Um, different if, if I got my, my private contractor hat on. So back, back to that original discussion, there could be more expenses in here, like I said, if it was Wes, because it's a 20- or 25-year amortization, and, um, there's the, the subject of property taxes. So, so anyway, that's where we went through, and I can't emphasize, we would not get off the dime unless Wes came and talked to us. So I had something to start to work with here. And so, um, I've talked with Dr. Ash, our president, he's very supportive, um, we're very supportive of, of how, how do we grow in Keokuk? And then, as I said, in another month or a month and a half, we'll have a work session with our board. And so in the end, they'll have to provide the direction. But, so if we, if we don't do the 156, I just wanted to be transparent with the numbers, and you, you probably the same thing, you have a tight budget. I know at SCC, we have a tight budget, I, and so I, I do appreciate that, but that's, even if we had the 156,000 board, we're taking on the occupancy risk as a college. Normally, we don't have 18 students on the women's basketball. We might have 10 that live in the dorms in some local. So, um, we've had a great coach, and he just retired JJ, you probably, probably all know JJ. We have a new coach now, um, Shavanta, Shavanda Price. She was just at Iowa Western in Council Bluffs, young, full of energy, but we have a different expectation as far as number of students. We want to be competitive. We want to grow students into great young adults, and on the business side, we need more tuition revenue. On the residence life side, we want to get up to 18. So we want basketball, maybe at least 15. There'll be some academics as we start to add bowling and some of these others. And then one day, we'll, we'll have to be thinking about, how do we add? And then decide, go back to, to, to Wes. Wes, how would we do this to do another 22-person dorm? And then I, I told Wes, we're a governmental entity, so we can't just turn around and say, Wes, you can build this. We have to go through all of our bidding and all of that, so, um, I'm just praising Wes because he spent a lot of time of his own money, because he loves Keokuk, and I think he loved the college, and he's, he's just trying to help out, and I, I needed the help because I didn't know where else to, to even start this, so. Thank you, Mayor, and, um, be happy to answer any questions, and particularly any detailed questions, Wes could help me answer.
Okay. You have a question? So just to orient myself, I turned my paper upside down to know where Messenger Road was, so that I can see it. And so the dorm, currently, what you're thinking of is this dorm here, is that correct? And then the 40-year plan moves you outward?
If, if you can see this, where, uh, I think Wes and I had the same thoughts, Dr. Ash and I had the same thought, but Wes came back. So this would be the east end, it, build the dorms up here, right? Right, Wes?
So.
So you're a dorm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The dorm is a lot farther.
Oh, the furthest out?
Right, because right now we're sitting a lot.
Okay.
So we're gonna start here.
Right.
You want to do your vision of possible?
Right. Yeah. And I, I'd love, absolutely love this idea. I love the idea of dorms in Keokuk, I love the idea of the sports that you're talking about, everything about it. Um, as a former educator, completely for this, one concern I have is putting dorms extremely close to elementary students' playgrounds. That, are you taking out trees there? Our natural fence line between you and our school district? The tree, all the trees?
The whole of that.
Okay, so like, it's still the same number of trees between us, or between Keokuk Community School District and SCC?
A natural barrier.
A natural barrier, okay. Um, would you, when you add in dorms and, you know, we're talking a lot about potentially women's sports, which I love, 100%, is there gonna be security on campus for them?
We, in, in West Burlington, it's a bigger campus, we currently use Permar. Um, we, we don't have the volume, or I could say probably the budget. So what, this is just one of many steps. How do we create activity? How do we create growth? The food service issue that I mentioned will take care of itself if you have enough volume. We have talked about, and there will come a time where we, where we need, and we may have to do it whether we can afford it or not, depending on the changing environment.
Right. Okay.
That's out there, yeah.
Okay. So the natural barrier of the trees are still existing between Hawthorne Elementary School and SCC? Um, but the dorms will be closest to our students, because we have play equipment that comes all the way out to the, to the tree line, um, on that, so they will, pretty close to each other.
Yeah. Now, we do have, um, I'll use the word, residence, resident assistance, RAs.
RAs, yeah.
So we have two, Frank, in case you don't
line between you and our school district? The tree, all the trees?
The whole of that.
Okay. So like, it's still the same number of trees between us, or between Kiake Community School District and SCC?
A natural barrier.
A natural barrier. Okay. Would you, when you add in dorms, you know, we're talking a lot about potentially women's sports, which I love, 100%. Is there going to be security on campus for them?
In West Burlington is a bigger campus. We currently use Permar. We don't have the volume, or I could say probably the budget. So, this is just one of many steps. How do we create activity? How do we create growth? The food service issue that I mentioned will take care of itself if you have enough volume. We have talked about, and there will come a time where we need, and we may have to do it whether we can afford it or not, depending on the changing environment.
Right. Okay.
That's out there. Yeah.
Okay. So, the natural barrier of the trees are still existing between Hawthorne Elementary School and SCC. But the dorms will be closest to our students because we have play equipment that comes all the way out to the tree line on that. So, they will be pretty close to each other.
Now, we do have, I'll use the word, Resident Assistance, RAs.
RAs, yeah.
So we have two. Frank, in case you know Frank, an adult, and he's been the assistant basketball coach. He lives there. And then, we have the other, another basketball coach that lives there, Kelby. So, that would be the intention. So of the 22 beds, two of the beds are taken by adults. That, in this first drawing, there's only 20 beds available. We needed to break even with 18.2 beds. So, we're almost filling it up, would be.
And a clarify too, until I talked to Kevin and Dr. Ash. So I went out there and seen, I thought there was a bunch of clearing. If you get out your cars, walk up on that, it is wide open. So the trees, I was considering the barriers, I think they could all stay like they are. You have plenty of room up there. I didn't realize it until I got up.
Right, right.
I thought the trees were right top of the hill.
Yeah. I had, my son was at SCC as a third grader when they did the construction at Hawthorne. So I was at SCC all of May, which we completely appreciated. It's a beautiful campus. So I got to walk a little bit of it. But you're right, it doesn't look quite big from the parking lot, which is where I was most of the time. So it's good to know that there is some parts back there, that you don't have to take away that natural tree line to get closer and closer to the students, which is what my concern is, is getting closer and closer. Putting two completely different ends close to each other.
I think the goal, kind of talk about it, the goal would be, the goal of like a mentorship too, with all of that, like, you know, everybody's different, there's no, honoring everybody else. But you could also use that as a positive, in terms of, not the kids would come over there, but those kids could walk over to the school and mentorship too, to kind of get involved in the community.
Right, right. I would love to see an education program there.
Yeah. Let me, seven. Can you read seven? I need reading glasses.
Parking around the dorms.
Oh, that would come later. So, Residence Hall 1, again, trying to keep our costs down, park in the existing parking lot, and just a sidewalk coming up. Yeah.
There'd be no rear parking.
Yeah. We haven't, there's lots of little details. For example, I'm thinking Pam of the building, the zone.
I was just going to say, one minor detail, it's an R2, which is a single-family dwelling district.
Yeah.
R4 does, but there is some R4 across the street. So, it wouldn't be something that you couldn't bring that over. It wouldn't be considered spot zoning if you went ahead and brought the R4, which is multifamily. But that's something that you need to consider.
Yes. And we've got that on our two. Thanks. And we wanted to visit with you, and then need to visit with the board. And, and, I mean, just, is there any help? That's what we are looking for. But I know you've got lots of people that need your help, that need your dollars.
Say that again, sorry.
The 156,000.
156 come from? Is that like AC doing?
That wouldn't be a contractor. I had that bid out.
Oh, okay.
The contractor budget that came back.
Okay.
So two people in town turned a bid, and one was for water, one for sewer.
Okay.
And not knowing and doing the research yet to know if they were able to connect on, we went ahead and just ran new taps on the street, all the way up.
Okay.
So, and aside for future expansion as well.
So, what I'm assuming is, is the 156, it might even be something where, instead of us just paying them directly, if it's something that, between Water Works and our crews, could do to extend it?
That's what I was wondering too. I like the investment in the community. I think this would be
Right.
really neat. But if there's a way that we could.
If it's, once we see what their plans are,
Yeah.
I think that at that point, we can determine whether or not that's something that our, like I said, between Water Works and our crews that we could do, or if it's something that they would then have to include as part of the bid package, and then we would then have to incentivize through a, basically, a cash payment. You will, besides talking to us, you will need to talk to Water Works.
I will, I will take that, any good, that's a great idea. We work with them and Zach James.
I know, I'm happy.
Oh, yeah. So what would the fund do? But what's the, maybe the potential, Housing Trust Fund? I will follow up first thing in the morning. Great idea. Thank you. I also know that Dr. Ash was, had planned to talk to the Kiake Community Foundation. So, just, again, trying to look for help wherever we can to make that. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Any more questions, guys? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did a great job.
Yeah, we have lots of homework yet to do. And hopefully, we'll be back one day.
Thank you very much.
Find somebody better to hang out with.
Thank you.
He's better off mine.
Shelley, you want to go?
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'm throwing, we're throwing Shelley in here for the housing report.
Okay. So, I'm just, we met this morning, the Kiake Housing Committee, that was established in order for us to do the Rural Housing Readiness Assessment, that was funded through Iowa Economic Development Authority, Empower Rural Iowa, was completed in the spring of 2021. The city actually, with the funds that you've given KEDC, KDDC actually took that fund, those funds to have that community match and support that program. And I just thought it was probably time for us to give you guys an update on a lot of the progress that we've had. You can see here on this first page, the participants throughout this process, the people that have participated in this process. It is not just a crew of one, it is many. And we are always looking for more people that want to get involved. So, if you know of anybody, or you might be that person, just give me a call and I'll get you on the email list. Sometimes I also just add people, because I like that they would participate. So, you know. I also want you guys to understand how this was built. This didn't just happen overnight. I've been in my position eight and a half years. And we have been very strategic about moving forward with this. This was built on the foundation of our comprehensive plan, that was completed in June of 2018. From there, we had that comprehensive plan. The, we had requested funding, KEDC had requested funding from the city to support the Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities, University of Iowa Community Partnership. We took and we submitted 25 projects, about 25 to 30 projects, that were completely out of that comprehensive plan, that we could work with University of Iowa students and faculty on. We ended up completing 21 projects, and then there was an additional two sweet ones that weren't considered, that didn't fall under that umbrella. But that faculty, there was a GIS project, and there was lead water tasting, lead water testing that was done with the school district. So we actually did have 23 projects that we completed. So then, after those projects were completed, they were completed in the fall of 2019 and spring of 2020, we actually have taken those plans and the work that we had done on housing and said, hey, what's the next step? Also, Kiake Economic Development Corporation had done some strategic planning in 2019, identified housing as one of their main things. The Kiake Chamber also did some strategic planning in the summer of 2021. And we also identified housing as one of our focuses. And in general, housing is the topic of most communities our size and in our condition with demographics that they're talking about. And so, we applied for that grant. We received that grant. We went through that process in the spring of 2021. As I said, we completed that. And then, really, what our future is looking at is, we're looking at, we have a vision of having 50 new infill, and I say 50 new units as well, in five years, as well as 50 renovated units in five years. And I think it's very viable. If you go on to your second page, and also, I just want to make sure that you guys understand, the city council funded this stuff through KEDC. And so, there's impact that you guys are having, that you might not feel like you're connected to it, but truly, you're having, you're multiplying those dollars. So, we hired an intern to start out to help us with implementation. So, that was in the summer of 2021, sorry. She did some different work that we've used to be able to keep moving forward. Kiake Neighbor Initiative, actually, that started, it was established before we started this, was in 2017. The house on 722 North 9th Street just got completed and sold to a family. And then, Habitat for Humanity is taking over the foundation on the 1100 block of Concert, and will have a house being delivered sometime in August or September. And then, on that, we're looking at Pocket Neighborhood Project. And this is a conversation that I'll talk a little bit in the, later on in this. But I want to thank Pam and Casey, and also Gabe and Dave for having good conversations around doing a vacant property registering inspection ordinance. We felt that this was a way that we could start by at least getting an understanding of where these vacant properties are, and having a little eye on what's going on with them before they get into a condition where we really can't do anything about them, and it's most likely demolition is the solution. We want to make sure that we're working with our property owners. It's, you know, it's not out here to be, to make it difficult for them. But the thing is, is that we are all impacted when we have vacant properties in our community. I have had a vacant house across from me since I have moved into my house in five, for five years, it has been vacant. They have just now, in the last three weeks, pulled a permit and are doing massive remodeling on it. But for five years, there was a vacant house across from us. That was not always secured. And so, that impacts everybody. And so, we thought that it's a great way to start, and easy enough to implement. So, tonight, Pam's going to talk about a little bit about the vacant property registering inspection ordinance. We reviewed that. Kira with Main Street Kiake Inc. also reviewed that. And we had some housing committee members that reviewed that and supported it as how it is going to be presented to you tonight. Then, we all look forward to going through a public hearing, and maybe the first, second week of August, and then moving forward with that with implementation. So, just want you guys to know, the housing committee supports that. It's one of those initiatives that was highlighted as something we wanted to get done right away. Moving on, the 600 block of Main Street, the city actually took ownership of those properties in 2017, along with about 50 to 60 other properties from a property owner who had had compiled a whole bunch of properties, wasn't taking care of them. And so, we used the Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities, one of the projects that we had, is we had engineering students look at those buildings and create plans as to how you could redevelop them. And so, they had an estimate, and then we actually just took those same plans and had an architect update them for this pass application for the $600,000. So this is just foundational things. You do one thing, you get to the next thing. And that's what we keep on doing. Then, we also got the $100,000 Catalyst Grant. We have the city ARPA funds at $200,000. It's an estimated $3 million project, and we have $900,000 there. And one of the housing council member, housing steering, housing committee members is a bank guy. I mean, he does numbers. He's an investment kind of guy. And he says that this project is a very viable project, just with these funds, let alone the additional funds that this developer could access, including historic tax credits, TIF, and also workforce housing tax credits potentially. The city's working through those contracts. You know, what we also are requiring, it's, you have, as a property owner, you can also say, you know, we want to make sure that you meet these certain things. So we're requiring, you have to have 10 market rate units. We don't want them to be LMI. We want them to be market rate. We know we have a dearth of market rate units that are quality in our community. And then, you know, two to three commercial storefronts as well. So, we are, for instance, on Monday, we're going to be meeting with a possible developer to tour those buildings. But that process is going to go through a public process. Pam and I have been working on RFPs, Request for Proposals, not only for those buildings, but also the 629 at the same time. We've received a great template that can help us, guide us through that. And then, we'll put those out through a public process that the city can determine as they want to move forward. It's a really great educational opportunity as well. So, the last page here, Pocket Neighborhood Project. So, the 600 to 700 block between Concert and Blonde Do was a neighborhood that we had noticed that there was, city has some own properties there, but also a lot of blighted and abandoned properties that have some issues. And so, we sort of looked at that. There was a pilot grant pre-application submitted. Sarah mentioned this when she was talking about how IEDA wants to look at CDBG grants in a different way. They're looking at more pocket, high-density impacts. So this would be a perfect example. And when Debbie was here visiting on June 15th, she did make comment that she believed we would be being asked to submit a final application as well. And that application would be going for new infill development, potentially, rehabs, and rehab in that space. Not just that two-block area, but also surrounding it. So, right now, what we're looking at is, is that we want to fundraise to acquire some of those properties. And we're sort of looking at three separate, different kinds of projects that potentially could happen. And really, these are just concepts. You know, we're just trying to throw out what could it potentially be. We really don't know yet. We don't obviously have the properties. So we also have to look at that. So, 1100 block Main Street, a lot of the questions around that, often, Roquette is in negotiations with Main Street Kiake Inc. on taking over those buildings, and then working to get them into a developer's hands as well. So, Rental Property Registering Inspection Program, I want to thank Gabe with the Kiake Fire Department. He's the lead on that. He shared at the meeting today that there are six firefighters that have been trained or will be trained as inspectors. Yeah. Great. And so, we're excited to be moving forward on that as well. I think you're going to have a little bit stronger headwinds with that one, just because it is a rental property aspect. But, you know what, Fort Madison is doing. There's other communities across the state, this is a big priority across the state, that communities are implementing. So, you know, you're not alone. Then, there is an innovation grant that we're looking to apply for in September 1. It's up to $50,000. And we're looking at housing as being maybe a focused application for that. And then, the Twin Rivers Urban Revitalization Area, Pam has been working with Cole. They expanded that and took the downtown, as you guys probably know all this right now, but they took that. And that's a big deal for our community, to be able to have that as a slum blight district. It doesn't have a sunset on it. But we have also talked in the housing committee meetings of proposing to residential tax abatement expanded to include rental properties. Currently, that tax abatement is only for owner occupied. All the other communities in Lee County that have this program have it for both owner-occupied and rental property. So, you know. And, but then also having a conversation around, maybe in the next two to three years, to hire a consultant, oh, no, sorry, a conversation about tax abatement from three to five years. There's some communities that have been doing that, just sort of tossing it out there as a potential conversation piece. Another thing that you may not understand, may not know, is that a three-lane conversion study was also done by the Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities students. And the reason that we are looking to do that has a lot to do with actually the noise related to having a highway running down our Main Street. That noise not only vibrates the streets and damages the buildings, but also with the exhaust, it also damages the buildings. And that's something that is going to continue to go on when we have four lanes of full-on traffic going down. So, around that conversion, a big conversation was, is how do we get some of that louder semi-traffic to be able to get off Main Street, for the majority of Main Street? It won't only lower that noise aspect, which we also, because of the noise, we do not qualify for HUD funds for upper-story restoration, which is a big pool of money that we could tap into if we fix that issue. But also, it would make Main Street much more comfortable when it comes down to sidewalk dining. I don't know how many times if you've been sitting there having a coffee outside of Lost Canvas, and all of a sudden, a semi-truck powers through. But it makes it so that our Main Street district could be a little bit more comfortable, provides a little bit different atmosphere, where walking pedestrian traffic is a little more comfortable as well. But, one of the things is that we were saying, you know, in two to three years, we would consider that it'd be nice to be able to hire a consultant to do a study on what that could look like around recommendations, including the community, obviously, the business owners, on how we can work around any of the barriers that they think may come up. And then, just another thing, tax sale strategy. A lot of communities, they, the city can actually take the property before it goes to tax sale. And so, are there opportunities for us to do, get some of these abandoned properties, these issue properties in our control, to be able then to be developed before they get into operation, or if need be, demolition and then infill. And then, also investigate workforce housing needs. And then also investigate workforce housing needs. One of the biggest things that we, people are like, well, do we really need workforce housing or executive housing? Well, I will tell you, most of your higher executive level positions that are working in our industries currently, they are not living in Kiakaka. They are choosing to live in Burlington, they are choosing to live in Quincy. And they're choosing to live in Fort Madison now because they have the housing. And I truly believe that we have, that dearth of housing is impacting our community in the aspect of their commitment to our community and involvement in our committee, as well as the aspect of, to be honest, having that money stay in our community. You know, if you're living in a community, you're most likely buying groceries there. You're most likely, you know, going shopping there, all those other things. So I think that, you know, we really need to have big conversations around what that would look like for an investment. And then our, growing our rehab programs. I just saw Casey today out. She has a list of people to approach about Habitat for Humanity dollars. We have the Housing Trust Fund dollars as well. You just saw the sustainability grant program that was right there. We really just need to focus on also assisting the people that are currently owning properties. How do we help them also invest in those properties so that they continue to be viable? So, any questions? I have to thank all the other people that are making this happen too, Kathy included, Cole included. Carissa is on that, that committee as well, as a, as a council member. So, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Okay, next, update on electric franchise fees.
During discussions on enhancing the general fund revenues, it was proposed to implement utility franchise fees. Staff estimated a 2% fee on all user classes for electric service would generate $760,000 in new revenue. Projections for both, for both revenues and expenditures in the general fund were based upon this number. Local industries were contacted to inform them of the proposed fees. Two industries responded that the fees would be significant increases to their operational costs. While residential and commercial users would see a net 1% increase to their bills due to not having to pay the 1% local option sales tax, industrial users would see a full 2% as electrical power usage is tax exempt when used in production, but is not exempt from franchise fees. Further investigation revealed that two industries would pay 90% of the industrial franchise fee for $423,900. During further discussions with staff and council, it was decided to set electric fees, electric franchise fees at a different rate for industrial and then, and residential, commercial customers. At 1% for industries and 3% for all others, projected revenue was $730,000 annually. This was close to the original $760,000 projection. The provoked, the proposed fees were presented to Alliant Energy and the company informed the city that their billing system could not change, could not charge different rates for different class of users. However, Alliant would work to modify their system to allow different rates, but it would take up, up to six months to make the change. And I have been informed that while they could not make the change within their billing system, they have a manual workaround that they will implement for us. A compromise on the fee rates was reached where the fees would be set at one and a half for all classes for this, for this calendar year. At this rate, the projected annual revenue was 700, was $570,000, well below the, the amount used in the revenue and expenditure projections for the general fund. The electric franchise allows the city to modify, modify the franchise fee rate. And it was stated that the city would move to modify the fees in July of 2022 with implementation in July of 2023. The modified fees at that time would be set at the compromise rate of 1% for industries and 3.5% for all other classes. The process for modifying the franchise fees is the same as implementing the fees. And the steps are as follows. Council adopts a revenue purpose statement indicating that the fees, what the fees will be used for. The state, and I did attach the statement from 2021 for you to look at. Council sets a public hearing on the proposed fee. An ordinance with the fee change is introduced and passed. The ordinance is published and filed with the Iowa Utility Board and the revised fees are charged starting January 1, 2023. I did do some analysis because Alliant did send up, send some updated usage numbers. And so you have a spreadsheet there. So at the very top in bold is the current numbers. Gas is still estimated upon the 2019 numbers that they gave us. I didn't ask for updates on that. And due to some, due to an error on their part, they did not fully implement the, the ordinance. And so we're working out, so I haven't got a, we haven't even got our first payment yet, but that will be coming very shortly. And then we might see where we're at with, with the gas fees. But as you see, gas is set at 2% because that was locked in at 2%. We did not, we took out the clause where we could come back and, and change that. But we locked in gas at 2%. And so with electric at one and a, one and a half percent, based upon the, the usage fees from 2021 that Alliant gave us, that 500, that 570,000 is now more around 604. And it's going to fluctuate depending upon usage. But you can see that the one and a half percent right now, based upon those numbers, does generate a little bit more. And so then the next line is what would be the proposed 1% for industrial, 3.5% for commercial and residential. And you see that the total for electric is 700, is estimated to be $779,000, which is above the 700, the original 760 that we projected. So based upon that, I said, well, what if we brought down the residential slightly to 3% instead of 3.5? And that's the next line, so 1% for electric, 3%, for commercial and industrial. You see that that now brings that down to 704. So again, it gives you an option that if, that if you want to, to, to not just go with the 3.5 that you can. But then I also looked at if we left the industry at one and a half and then only increased residential to 3% instead of 3.5. That's a big jump there of, so it goes to 800, 830,000. But at one and a half for industry and two and a half percent for residential, you're at 754, 802. The very last column though, shows you what those two industries would be paying based upon those estimates. So at one and a half, it's estimated that those two industries alone pay $340,000 of the $378,000 of, of the industrial fees. When we go down to 1%, you see that, that there's $114,000 difference. It goes down to 226,803. So even though, you know, you could lessen the impact on commercial and residential, you maintain that, that, that impact upon those two industries by leaving at one and a half percent. So what I'm asking for tonight is some discussion, questions on, on all of this. And give us some direction on where you would want to go with the ordinance before we start the process.
Cole, are we able to look at, because you gave us three and a half to three, with three and a quarter? Does that, is that an option on the table as well?
It, it, it could be an option. It's just that what it is, is, is I'm working off a worksheet that, that Alliant gave us. So I'd have to ask them for three and a quarter.
So that would be 741,840 for the residential, if you did three and a quarter.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Uh, 741? 741,000 roughly.
Oh, okay, total?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just for an idea, if we're looking at is three and a half, too high, but does three not get us to where we need to be? That's where three and a quarter would roughly land us.
Three would get us where we need to be, three and a quarter would add a buffer.
Okay, I thought he said 760 was where we wanted the residential number at.
Well, 760 total.
Total, okay.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, total.
All right, thank you for that.
Sorry, I'm like, that was not the number. Yes, 700 total was for franchise.
Right. So at, so at three, so at 3% and 1% for industry, we're only at 704. But again, you know, when we did, when we did the compromise, the actual target is 730. Okay? Because that, that, based upon those, those numbers. So you're only $26,000 off at one and 3%.
That's a.
One and a quarter for industry? I mean, I can, I can look at that and then, you know, give you a, a number there.
So what's electric and gas already paying? They've already paid for a half a year, right?
Yes. So what it is, is, is I did look at the one payment we received because it's paid after every quarter. And so we only got, the only one we've gotten is the first quarter, which ended in March. The payment came in the first week of May. So I'm expecting our second quarter payment to come here within the next couple of weeks. But what we received from Alliant for the first quarter was 166,230. If you took that times four, meaning that that's what we should, if that's what we were getting every time, you'd be at $664,000. Again, which is above the 570 that was, that was projected. I would go with the more conservative numbers based upon the, the 2021 usage, but.
I like the idea of giving a quarter to the industry and not putting all of it on residential and commercial to make up the difference. I understand the, the weight of it on industry. But I think that if we're, if we're going to finagle it, they, they should be in the middle of that too.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was looking at the same way. If you could separate out the commercial from the residential as well.
Well, it, I, I.
Different fees for.
For, for commercial and, and residential? Well, you, you, you can set different, you certainly could set a different fee for commercial than you do residential. What I can tell you is that commercial actually comes in just about this, the, based upon this worksheet here, that commercial comes in slightly less than residential receipts right now. So they're about even. In order to make up the difference of what you perhaps put on, on, you know, in what you don't increase on residential and then you increase on commercial, I don't know what, how much that is, but it might be more than a quarter percent, might be more than a half percent, might be another full 1%. I'd have to take a look at that number.
So right now, electric's paying 1.5 and gas is paying 2?
Yeah, and, and there's, there won't be any change in two, in the, in the gas because we locked that in for five years.
Okay. So, but there would be a change in the electric?
Well, the council can do as it pleases, but during our discussions, because of the impact to, especially to two industries, that what we said was is we'd set it at one and a half, one and a half for this calendar year, but then come back and provide some relief to the industry's side of it. Because they are, because like I said, two of those industries are paying 90% of the, of the franchise fee for industrial.
I like the, the 1% and the 3%. If we wanted to go more for the buffer, we could do the one and a quarter, three and a quarter. This is just me personally. But 700 was the goal, so it looks like at the one and three, we do reach that. So if, just wanting a little bit more, one and a quarter, three and a quarter would work.
And, and, and do understand that, that, that for residential and commercial, at 3%, the total net increase over the two years is actually only 2%. Because they don't pay the, the local option sales tax. Okay? So, you know, I think.
Yeah, I, I was gonna, I'll, I'll mirror Rosalyn there. If the one and the three gets us to our goal, I would, I would want to keep those rates as low as they possibly could be to hit the goal. I'm not really worried about a cushion.
Alliant is, is gouging people as it is, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and it can be changed, but I think right now prices are high for residents.
Yeah, the, the other thing that you, that you understand is, is that the, that the language within the franchise still allows us to make an adjustment. So what it is, is if, if we come back, we can always lower it too. So what if, what happens is, is as we start getting these, we're finding out that more is coming in than what we need, we can always scale it back. We just have to, you know, it's just, once we do it, it's locked in for a year.
I like one and three personally.
So, okay, so I, I can prepare it based upon one and three. I think that, I think that, I think that, that that gets us pretty close to our, where we need to be. And I think there's some flexibility there. Okay, so that's what I'll, I'll work on and start the process with the next council meeting.
Last but not least. It's your turn, Pam.
I am just going to speak real quick, Code Revision Committee. Actually, not, yes, Code Revision Committee, which Rosalyn, I know was on the Code Revision. I think Roger.
And Linda.
And Linda, yes, Linda Altad reviewed this. There was a few actual changes that we made. There are some other, Casey and I have, you know, read it, reread it. And every time you read it, you think, eh, I don't really like that language. But it's mainly just to identify vacant properties and these include nuisance lots that we're going to, you know, try to identify and more or less make the property owners more responsible for the maintenance of the properties. There are several things in here, the council will have to choose what they want for fees, that type of stuff. We're not going to bore you with a lot of this, I'm going to let Casey talk a little bit about it. But I, you know, read it. If you have questions, if you have any input, we would appreciate that. Questions now, we'll be more than happy to answer. But I'm going to let Casey talk just a little bit about, she's worked hard on this, so I would like her to speak.
We were excited to be able to help establish this and then with you guys to carry on with whatever we can do to make it better. There's a ton of details that you could put into this or not put into it because it'll be something that actually is going to, you know, evolve and get better and better with time. Just like we're going to make the neighborhoods and just, you know, everything better with time. This is going to make it where we can help the people that are in distress and areas that are falling into not being stabilized. We can get people wanting to live there and then the contagiousness of like enjoying your property and, and improving it every year. Some of the details that are in here, obviously if you guys have some kind of, whatever your opinion is, let us know because there's, there's hundreds of options on some of the wardings. We really felt that these were pretty good, but even every time we look at it, we kind of think, well, maybe that's a little too much. But an example of that is when you get to vacant property registration required, we have a portion in there that says 90 days and we've gone between 30, 60 and 90. And every, every time then I, we, well, I decided, okay, 90. But now that I really think about it and read about it and then look back at other communities, I think we should fall back to the 30 because we've already had 180 days or, or five years of, of distress. So really I would, I would like for you guys to think about, when you see that 90 days, us dialing it back to 30. And then the fees, you guys have some examples of those and it's such a wide range. I know that we're in poverty right here, even, even those families with two incomes coming in that are, you know, pretty decent right now. We're all going to suffer, you know, from it. But we just got to really consider, you know, if we. know, if we go with that baseline low annual fee, it's, it's going to help maybe them put back into their homes. But then again, we got to think about all the services and times that we're going to provide for inspections and, you know, all the time, really, involved in this, we might want to go higher. So it's something that, that portion is going to be hard for you guys to decide, and we'll support either way you go with it. But when you think about those higher fees, people will decide, in my opinion, is if, if they want to stay here and make their property better, or if they want to go ahead and maybe sell that property because they can't have that registration fee. You know, they'll give it to somebody else who has the opportunity to really invest in it, instead of the, you know, just being a situation where it's dwindling. So that's, that's where I am with the, the fees. But I could go on for hours of if we would look into each detail, but you guys just have your questions when you're ready, and we'll talk about anything we can.
I would like to say that we are planning on holding a public information meeting for property owners. We haven't said that yet, but I'm, I'm thinking the second week, maybe in August. So anyone that, of you that want to come and get public's responses, we would welcome you.
I think you both did an awesome job on this. We did have a long discussion on all of the nitpicky stuff at that meeting. I, the only thing that I'm hoping for is to work really closely with Jim Dennis, because we talked about the court filing system. There, there's nothing you can do once it's filed, but it has to be filed timely. It cannot be something that sits for 30 days. You know, if you're saying they're not compliant, it can be filed in a day.
That is one of the hugest battles is time. When, when we have a nuisance and, and we've given them every opportunity to work through it, and then historically, we've actually abated it, and then it reoccurs, and we go to the court process of it, it is just, really takes you away from other projects that you could be working on with our resources of time and money and, and Jim's time, too.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that, and I don't know if that would be more orchestrated through Cole with a contract or something like that, but it needs to be that they're not getting an extra 60 days because it's not been filed, just to get on a court schedule.
Yeah, and actually, then when we do get to that point in court, when the judge, you know, gets to the point of, a lot of times, the judge will give them 30 more days, but I also, we go ahead and I say, you know, I talked to Jim about, okay, we've already been dealing with this for 90 days, so if you can do anything to, you know, to not extend that, that brief period that the judge is going to give them, let's, we're not giving in anymore. Our sympathy is, is gone.
Yep.
Yeah.
That, that was going to, one of my questions was, how do we get these people to register these vacant and abandoned properties in the first place?
We're going to reach out for the public meetings. We have spoke with Clinton Iowa. They have advised us that getting people to register is, is a chore. We know what we're up against. We'll just have to continue to, you know, take people to court if we have to, to try to get compliance with the property.
A lot of the current owners of these vacant and abandoned buildings don't even live around here, so.
We have many that have, yes, that have purchased them on tax sales, and, and I'm hoping that this will stop some of that, you know, that they will not, you know, a lot of times, they don't even come down and look at a property. They just buy it on tax sale, and then they think, I mean, some of Casey's, the fees that she presented to you tonight that people have paid, they pay sometimes $25,000 for something that, a vacant lot that's something's been torn down. They, I mean, somebody from Chicago or California, they think they have something, and, and I mean, we, you know, I mean, it's a vacant lot that has, that they're not going to get their payback on that, so.
I think if we can send the ordinance or the registration with the tax sale documents, that might help, too. Having something like, this has been previously vacant, we're expecting you to register it now that you own it.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Are there any mechanisms in this that will assist the city in acquiring those properties? We all know which ones they are, the worst of the worst, that we know the owners are never going to do anything. Are there any mechanisms in here, or is it mainly that we just hit them with fines so often until they make a decision to do something about it?
The only thing we've done in the past, Mike, is if it's something that we think that we can turn it around, I mean, as far as even just taking it down and getting something else built there, or giving it to a neighbor, or, you know, a neighbor purchasing it, we have worked with them to either try to deed it to us. So there's nothing in the ordinance. I mean, we can research to see if there's anything that's possible. I've never, honestly, have you seen anything of that nature in any other ordinances?
Besides the 657A, I haven't seen any other, you know, avenue that we could look into, but we're constantly reaching out to their communities and that have already, you know, kind of paved the way. We can even look into other states and then make sure that, you know, Iowa, that we'd be in compliance, you know, to utilize other, other states' ways, but I think it's just us doing more research on it. We're just now kind of like, okay, let's, let's go.
So really, it's like, for the example that Mr. Fox came and shared with us a couple weeks ago, it would be making the fees a dollar amount so that that property owner does then want to sell it to his neighbor instead of to continue to pay those fees.
Correct. There is, and, and we, I don't know, I didn't look and see what Casey sent you on fees, but there are some fees that go up after so many years. I mean, that the city can actually take those funds, I think, and, and maybe put, you know, put them into rehabbing those. I think if somebody just turns their back on something, they're not paying their taxes and such, yeah, we can go out after it on a 657. I did want to address Mr. Fox, by the way. I forgot to do that earlier, and I'm sorry. Casey and I went by last Monday. The property is not near in the state as he described. There was broken windows that Casey has had taken care of. There was one broken window that needed some attention. Back into the house, I looked clear around the house. There didn't appear to be a lot of foundation issues. I could see in the windows, other than there was a small area in the back that there was too many vines and such to see in the windows. That may be where he's referring, as the ceiling is collapsing, but there was nowhere else in the house that the ceilings were collapsing, not one. I told Casey, if, if it's something that the city, that probably would be a good rehab project. If, I don't know if we could get it, he's paying his taxes, but, and Mr. Fox also can go after that in a 657 since he's a neighbor. So we can send him that information, you know, if he wants to look into that.
We have a letter that he needs to, you know, get a plan of action to us for the things that are in nuisance. We have went ahead because the property manager, this local, had been given the information to secure the, the areas it needed to be, and that failed, so I did send somebody to, to board up those areas and then fence off a couple stairway areas that would, if, would be impending, like injury if somebody would go through that area. So that was done immediately. They need to get to us, like I said, by the 8th with a plan of action. After that, the areas of the roof that do have some dilapidation and minimal, in, like, instability and not actually being secure, like just some gutter areas and just a little bit of flash, flashing, I guess, those areas are probably a quick, very temporary repair, but nothing, it, it doesn't look to be anything for, like, devastating structure problems exteriorly. We know it's a nuisance, and we feel for him, like, I feel for him so bad, because he has a beautiful house, he has grandkids that are right there, but we can't, you know, go, go in full force, bull about it because there's, it's not that bad of conditions.
Any more questions? Well, this meeting's adjourned.